So, um, it was saying this thirty inch interceptor has not been fully put into service due to concerns with high levels of infiltration and infestation. Can you please explain what that is? And, um...
So while it's only completely at our capacity because we want to limit it to our capacity, is that we agree because we can totally analyze that outside as we can right now?
What I was saying is that the capacity that we said would be available...
Uh, on doing this, okay, so we've already contemplated and presented that we do this. And, and the money for this is really just coming from the water and, and we're doing an inter transfer to wastewater, is that correct? Okay, thank you, sorry. I didn't understand until you brought this one up.
Oh, okay.
Um, we already talked about, do you have an answer for it? So the five items relevant to Project RE3, got, uh, one of those is the work of integrity and, uh, we were in a joint, uh, those of the council to vote in favor of this. See if it's going to come out to the table.
Um, I don't want to talk about it.
All right, let's go ahead to, uh, for, uh, the time, uh, please pull it. Which, uh, which part? Yeah. It's item ten, uh, first reading of the process of the way you're finding it. Yeah. So when you pull that, we'll, 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 that's the same, like, uh... Okay. And, uh, what you're saying, if, if council bill, three, three, like, uh, council, uh, uh, we, you know, we also, uh, allies, uh, what's, like, what, uh, uh, okay? And, uh, it's, uh, right, uh, we, 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 uh, yeah, I got it. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is the October eighth, two thousand eighteen Westminster City Council meeting. And at this point, I would ask you pleased to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Parker, would you take the roll, please?
Atchison.
Here.
Bird. Here. DeCamber. Demott.
Here.
Pinter. Here. Sights.
Here.
Scully.
Counsel, this time I would move a motion and request a second on excused absence for, uh, Counselor DeCamber, who is on maternity leave, and Counselor Scully, who is out of town on business travel. I'll look for a second to the motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those are excused absence. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of September the twenty-fourth. Ms. Sights?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen meeting as presented.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a couple of short presentations. Uh, Counselor Bird, if you would, please, read one week.
So can I have Eleanor Scott and Kathy Pascoe join me up front? So, we'll give a little bit of background information. Um, today, we're celebrating Red Ribbon Week and Month. So Red Ribbon Week emerged from the creation of Camarena Clubs, which were established in nineteen eighty-five to honor the memory of Drug Enforcement Agent Enrique Kiki Camarena, who was killed in the line of duty by wearing red ribbons, such as many of us have this evening. Um, Americans demonstrate their art and support of a healthy, drug-free lifestyle and pay homage...
...to all men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice in support of our nation's struggle against drug trafficking and abuse. Each year, activities increase throughout the month of October. Twenty eighteen marks the thirty-second year that Westminster has proclaimed Red Ribbon Week and the fourth year that the city has observed October as Red Ribbon Month. Through its participation, the city of Westminster joins thousands of other municipalities in Colorado and the United States to present a unified and visible commitment to a drug-free America.
Is there anything you'd like to say about this before I read the proclamation? Uh, yes, please.
Uh, well, we thank you for doing the proclamation tonight first and, uh, for also being a partner in our community coalition. And another partner we have is the Colorado National Guard. And in preparing for Red Ribbon Week, the schools, um, are able to apply to have a fly-in from the National Guard. They have to be a part of the coalition to do that. And we're very fortunate because we have thirteen Jefferson and Westminster schools who will get to have a fly-in, which means that a, uh, Blackhawk helicopter will land in their schoolyard and, uh, give an anti-drug program along with a Drug Enforcement Administration agent. And then the kids each get a red ribbon. That's their ticket to walk up and get to look over the helicopter. So the students are very excited when they get to have this proclamation. It's wonderful. Well, thank you for being part of that happen.
Well, thank you for your commitment to our kids and to our community. This is great work that you're doing. We all benefit from it, so thank you so much. And with that, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use by our youth is a threat to the future of our nation, and whereas it is imperative that a unified and visible commitment of prevention efforts by community members be continued to reduce the demand for illegal drugs and illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership and the Westminster Area Community Awareness Action Team, CAAT, are sponsoring the national, statewide, and local Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment toward helping children stay drug-free as they grow up. And whereas, this year's national theme, Life is Your Journey, Travel Drug-Free, will headline celebrations in communities across the nation during Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-third through October, October thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. And whereas Westminster area school students and faculty, businesses, government, law enforcement, religious institutions, service organizations, youth, health providers, senior citizens, sports teams, and individuals will be demonstrating their commitment to drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the campaign. And whereas the city of Westminster is committed to assisting with the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now, therefore, I, Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, do be, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, hereby proclaim October to be Red Ribbon Month and October twenty-third through October thirty-first, two thousand eighteen to be Red Ribbon Week in the city of Westminster, and encourage our citizens to participate in drug prevention ac- education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald.
Josh? How about the members of the Youth Advisory Panel? Where do you guys all, uh, come on up?
Let me, um, tell you a little about, this is a young group of students who represent most of the schools in our three school districts and some that are not only in high school, but charter schools and middle school. This is a group who represent you. They are the future of who we are. Now, many of these are student leaders in their own schools today. Many of them aspire to become leaders, but that's why they're all here. This group spends an enormous amount of their own time donating to Westminster causes, helping to raise funds, participating in city events as high school students. They're all in leadership programs in their various schools, but this is our fifteenth? Twentieth? Twentieth year of this panel. And each year, we bring in a few new ones, and each year, we graduate a few. But thanks to Joe and to Cindy, who are our staff volunteers. Cindy has been with it since it was founded, so twenty years as a volunteer with this group. But tonight, I want to present your two thousand nineteen Westminster Youth Advisory Panel and the volunteer work that they will be doing over the coming year. So I will ask, uh, Josh, if you will, please, turn to the right, and I'll let each person introduce themselves and the school they represent, so John, who's over there?
Hi, I'm Josh Schmidt, and I'm in that Monarch High School.
Hi, I'm Kylie Nazareth, and I'm in, uh, Monarch High School.
Hi, I'm Claudia Semczuk, and I go to Stanley Lake High School.
Hi, I'm Paula Menefus, and I go to Westminster.
Hi, my name is Krista Cousy, and I represent Jefferson Academy.
Hi, I'm Polly Semcuk, and I represent Stanley Lake High School.
Hello, I'm Reece Savage. I also represent Jefferson Academy.
Maya Davis, and I go to Legacy High School.
I'm Emma Grazianno, and I go to Rawson Valley High School.
I'm Irving Wendosa, and I go to Brown Middle School.
I'm Rachel Shagnon, and I go to Northland High School.
I'm Cohen Haley, and I also go to Northland High School.
I'm Yuri Fung, and I go to Stargate High School.
I'm Mike Wood, and I also go to Stargate High School.
I'm Abby Waller, and I go to Legacy High School.
I'm Mackenzie Jones, and I go to Mountain Range High School.
I'm Kate Delet, and I also go to Mountain Range.
I'm Josh Flores, and I go to Stanley Lake.
Thank you, guys. Whereas the City Council of the City of Westminster believes our youth should share with their community leaders the responsibility of addressing their needs, desires, challenges, and issues, and molding their own futures. And whereas the city values its youth and desires to advance and promote their special needs and interests, and therefore created the Westminster Youth Advisory Panel on September the thirteenth, nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas currently, the panel has nineteen members appointed for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, and whereas it is important to acknowledge the contributions made by incoming panel members. Now, therefore, I, Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby recognize and extend appreciation to the following incoming Youth Advisory Panel members who are currently serving on the Youth Advisory Panel representing their schools and Westminster youth. The Chair, Josh Flores, Stanley Lake High School, since fourth year of service. Maya Davis, Vice Chair, Legacy High School, third year of service. Jack Smith, Secretary, Monarch High School, second year. Hela Benitez, Treasur, Westminster High School, four years. Claudia Sem- Claudia? Pronounce it. Pronounce it, Lance.
Semtuk.
Semtuk, I apologize. Stanley Lake High School, three years. Pauline Semtuk, Stanley Lake High School, three years. Esmerella Benitez, Westminster High School, four years. Blake Val, Stargate, first year. Rachel Cagan, Northland, first year. Krista Cousy, Jefferson Academy, first year. Kate Delet, Mountain Range, first year. Yuri Fung, Stargate, first year. Judith Garcia, Stanley Lake High School, first year. Emma Grazianno, Rawson Valley, second year. Cohen Haley, Northland High School, first year. Mackenzie Jones, Mountain Range, first year. Irving Wendosa, Westminster High School, four years. Kylie Nazareth, Mona High School, first year. Abby Robinson, Legacy High School, second year. Pea Vieira, Jefferson Academy, first year. Abby Waller, Legacy High School, first year. This group will also be doing their second Youth Leadership Summit. Last year, they formed this summit, put it together on their own, with some help, raised most of the money for what they're doing, and held it at the Marriott Westminster. The first year for a regional youth summit, four students, five students, with a hundred and fifty participants. Their goal this year is to double that to three hundred. So we're looking for opportunities for any of our local businesses. We have reached out to every school district, every elected official in Adams and Jefferson County and Brumfield, to provide funds to help them put on this program. Our goal is to raise fifty thousand dollars for the youth. They will be putting that summit on again on March the first, and we encourage, if you have a student that's in a school that either touches Westminster, supplies Westminster with students, or has Westminster students attending, that they be offered the opportunity to attend the summit. This is a great opportunity. We had excellent feedback last year from the students that put that on, and we hope to have an even better event for them this year. The proclamation was signed on the eighth day of October, two thousand eighteen. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your Westminster Youth Advisory Panel. Good challenge, Joe.
I know. So can I ask the back row to carefully take a step backwards and get on that step there? I think that's gonna help us. Great. No, no, you guys need to be in there.
Yeah, uh, Joe. You're gonna send it over here. Right next to it.
There we go. Okay, I'll take a couple of shots here, real quick. And one more. Great, thank you.
Okay, don't move. If there anybody in the audience that's trying to get photos, that's trying to strip, this is your opportunity. Everybody good? Congratulations, buddy, that one. Thank you, guys. All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, if those of you who haven't stuck around, have a chance to see, uh, the rest of the meeting, drop, maybe run for the hills. All right, just so everyone's aware, we have a couple of minor adjustments to the agenda to accommodate seven forty... In the audience, we will be moving item eleven A, eleven B, and eleven C up in the agenda. It will follow right after item eight, which is the consent agenda. This is all second reading items from previous business. Next item on the agenda is citizen communications. It's a period of time that those who wish to, uh, bring forward an item to the City Council on anything that is not scheduled for a public hearing, we do have one, but that's later on in the agenda. At this point, I have nine people who have signed up. As a reminder, you'll come to the podium once you've announced, uh, who you are, not your address. If you're already signed up, I have your addresses. You will have up to five minutes to speak on the subject you wish to. The green light will come on as soon as you give your name. Yellow light will come on as a reminder, you have one minute left, and if a red light, please end your testimony. First person I have is Debbie Teeter.
Hi, I'm Debbie Teeter. I live at seven nine nine six Bradburn Boulevard in Harris Park neighborhood of Westminster. For those of you who do not know what Harris Park is, we are continually called Southwestminster, Old Westminster, but we are Harris Park, and that's who we've been since the late eighteen hundreds. Um, I am here, first, I would like to thank David Demott for listening, for voting, and remaining to his campaign promises, listening to his constituents, and sometimes, and almost always, being the lone man, listening to his constituents. And I would like to show my appreciation for Dave Demott. Uh, our neighborhood appreciates that you do that. Second, I would like to... I would also like to bring the water issue up again. I went, uh, to the community meeting, was, watched several people be shut down instantly, saw several people be talked to tersely, and it was just really out of character for many of the people that are on council, and not what I expect from people that are our elected officials who we put into office. Second, I decided to, let's look at this openly, and I took my water bill, and I went onto the site, and I looked at the usage. It stated that the usage on the water was, the first tier was a normal household. Those who know me know I travel for business. My husband also lives away from the house for business. So the main water user in my house is an eighty-eight-year-old woman, gonna be eighty-nine really soon. It showed we're using five thousand gallons a month, or we're at the five thousand level. And I'm trying to figure out how an eighty-eight-year-old woman can do that on her own. We have no teenagers in the house. During that month, I traveled two weeks, and my husband lived out of the house a total of fifteen days. We do not wash our cars outside, and this was the month of February, so I'm not watering anything, I'm not washing a car outside, I have no active things in my house that would constitute using excess water. So now picture this, what if I had two teenage boys in the house, and I had people that lived in that house full-time? We would well exceed that amount of water. So it's not in truth that the tier one is actually for a normal household. When I took my water bill, are you listening, Herb? When I took my water bill, I... I took my water bill and I looked at what my average usage is gonna be, and it puts me well to the top of the second tier and to the third tier. So I'm trying to figure out why this tiered system is necessary. I am in an area that is larger, lots, lower income, and diverse. So this is really an attack on that neighborhood of fixed income, a diverse neighborhood, low income. So I'm not sure why the tiered system's gonna be fair. I know that it's totally out of the possibilities right now to not do the increase at all. Dave's given different ideas of how this can be done, they've all been shot down. I've heard the police that, yes, we need healthy and safe drinking water. Well, Nancy McNally put most of that in place before. So I still do not understand why the maintenance has not continued. Thank you very much, and thank you for listening, Herb.
Dan Arcalos?
City Council of Westminster, thank you for taking the time to, uh, listen to me tonight, and thank you for the work that you do for the citizens of, uh, Westminster. So I've never set foot in this building before, never had a cause to, till I found out what you had planned to do with the water rate structure. Emailed several of you, some of you didn't even respond to my request for an explanation. I can tell you this, no reasonable citizen of Westminster would actually argue against an increase if it was a reasonable amount. That being said, an average family understands they have a home, they have to maintain the home, sometimes you have to paint the house, sometimes you have to do electrical work or plumbing, it costs a little bit of money. So no reasonable citizen here tonight would argue against an increase if they could see the true value in it. But I propose to you that the increase that you are proposing is way out of line. Now, the mere fact that there are so many people here tonight specifically for the water issue should be a red flag, it should be telling you that, hey, maybe something is out of sorts, maybe something is not quite right. So with regards to the tiered system and the increase, um, I would recommend to the City Council, if you go against the will of the citizens of the city of Westminster, perhaps they're gonna remember that. Elections have consequences, that's not, that's, I don't, please don't take that as a threat, I'm just saying, people do remember. My suggestion to you is, come up with an alternative proposal, make it legitimate, make it real so that people can understand it, and then even put it to a vote to the citizens. Let the citizens decide. The problem is, this perceived, uh, increase that you have is either caused by one of two things, either if you say that there's dire needs for the infrastructure, then one would have to say, gosh, what... then one would have to say, gosh, what happened? Who's been dropping the ball? Why haven't we been maintaining the system this whole time? It's either that, or, all right, if the system has been maintained, and you say we haven't been negligent in that, then the other conclusion is this is a money grab. So I would propose to you that it's probably one of those two things, at least in perception of the citizens of Westminster. So once again, I'll ask you to reconsider another proposal. Nobody's arguing that we don't need safe, clean water. Nobody's really against paying legitimately for it. We all get that. That's no rocket science there. But the way you're going about this, and the way the program that you proposed would come online is just not effective for the citizens of Westminster. So thank you for your time tonight.
Just waiting on you, Beth.
Oh, it's waiting on me. Okay, sorry. All right. With that being said, my name is Beth Bishop, and I am a reasonable citizen and resident of Harris Park. And I come to you tonight to also talk about the water and sewer rates and the proposed increase. Let me just tell you this. I live in Harris Park on West 74th Avenue in one of the older, large lots of about a third of an acre. And I am in support of your recommendation to adopt these increases. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about why. I retired from working many... Oh, one other point I wanted to make was that as a large lot owner, I do not believe that, last time I looked, that that, being a large yard owner, puts me in any type of protected class that you need to worry about discriminating against me, by the way. Having said that, I will also move on and say that I retired from working many years at Metro Wastewater Reclamation District and sat in many meetings where these topics were discussed. So I know a little bit about what all is involved in setting tap fees, ratepayer fees, and making sure equipment and interceptor lines are adequate for handling the flows for future development. I was here and heard the staff presentation some weeks back on this subject, and I thought it was very informative, by the way. I'd like to compliment all of the staff and city council and the mayor for their thoughtful efforts on how to best meet the needs of our city while keeping the impact on residents within reason. I know that with as, with almost every topic, there seem to be very vocal people who will speak out on negative reactions, and some even relish being as negative as possible and trying to rally others behind them and try to vote, or have you vote, against anything having to do with growth, development, and sustainability. As someone who does pay attention to these topics and to what goes on in my community, I just want to be a positive voice in this matter and in supporting and appreciating all of your efforts. Thank you.
Russell Logan. And I worked for the city for 38 years at the Water Department. I started the Semper Water Plant in 1970. I worked at the England Water Plant in 1963 to 70. And our main thing was to conserve water, and that's what we taught to the public. Last year, I got a water bill, and I didn't use 1,000 gallons for a month. So it said zero, right? But the city of Westminster put down 2,000 gallons on my sewer charge because I didn't use 1,000 gallons of water for that month. And that happened like two or three months of that winter section. So then the next, by, when the winter was over, I was charged a higher sewer rate because of the 2,000 gallons that I got charged for that I didn't use for the two or three months. I thought that was unfair, so I went to City Hall and talked to the utilities, and they said, that's the way it is, because we need the money. That was the answer I got, so. And they said, well, look into it. And I just wondered if you guys have looked into it yet. (laughing) If you haven't, you should, because you don't want to charge people for water that he didn't use. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Mark Kaiser, 7035 Zenobia. 110,000 people already have that address and my phone number, so no problem here. You know, it's been some time since I've been sitting on City Council. And before I sat on City Council, I got to chase our Waters and Utilities Department when they had breakdowns in the equipment. And there were several times that I also caught the wrath of a citizen who, for one reason, either had their basement flooded, no water, or one or anything and another. So one of the things that happened when I got elected to City Council, so I sat down with Brent, City Manager Brent McFaul, Mayor Nancy McNally at the time, and we went over, what are your priorities? What do you want to see done when you're on City Council? And I said, the one thing is, I want upgrades and repair to our infrastructure. And at that time, the city was experiencing over 100 water breaks per year. So as time went on, I got my wish. The council passed a 3% to 5% increase in water and sewer rates per year. And yes, we caught some flak from, from people. And then, all of a sudden, here comes this big proposal for a big rate increase. So what the problem is, what happened to that rate increase that was enacted when I was on City Council? What happened to that money? This should have been an ongoing thing for the last eight years. And evidently, that money has either been misused, misappropriated, or put somewhere else. So I'm really frustrated because I'm going to... When I was on the District 50 School Board, Joanne Smith taught me one thing. She said, look 20 to 30 years into the future when you're in a public office. And evidently, the councils that have sat after us have forgot that we looked 20 to 30 years into the future. Another thing today that was really interesting, I had the opportunity to talk to five different businesspeople who don't work in City of Westminster, but they live in City of Westminster. And I heard one thing that really upset me again. They feel this council does not listen. You've already decided what you're going to do before you've ever sat or even looked. You've looked at the title. You've already made up your mind. In fact, I'm surprised tonight that this place is not more standing room only. But I think the reason is, the five people that I talked to today said, it doesn't make any difference. They've already made up their mind. I'm not coming. Maybe they'll vote at the ballot box, I hope. The other thing is, as somebody who is facing a job change right now and looking at probably within two years of fixed income, this is going to hurt the fixed income people in our community. So I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Joe Janicki, and I live in Highland Greens East. I attended the meeting that the council had at MAC a few weeks ago and had a chance to visit with Don Tripp and Max Kirshenbaum. And I asked Don several questions about how the city plans for a depreciation of assets, specifically water infrastructure. You know, any business is going to have accruing monies to repair lice trucks, to replace buildings, to replace equipment, stuff like that. And I was a little shocked to hear that the city doesn't. The city just goes from, goes in two-year increments and does an inspection of their, of the facilities and stuff like that, and then makes a determination what needs to be done. And I asked him if he knew if other cities did the same thing. And he said that he had considerable experience with other cities, and apparently, they, they behaved the same way, which is a little surprising. I hope I understood your, your comments correctly, Mr. Tripp. So I'm just shocked that that's the methodology that Westminster uses to manage such an important asset, that they don't accrue monies, they don't pay any attention to it, except every two years, they hire a consultant that goes out with a flashlight and comes back with an aw shit report. And, and then everybody panics and tries to raise money. So that's one, one observation I had from, from City Council at the MAC meeting. The second was, I was talking to Mr. Kirshenbaum because I was interested about how much water Denver is actually using out of its, all of its water rights throughout the state. And, long story short, after finally getting nomenclature straightened out, Westminster's currently using about 2/3 of its water rights, and the other 3/3 of it is leased off, sold off to agricultural needs and stuff like that. So we're, we're not really dealing with a water conservation issue here. This is really just to collect money for infrastructure. And what confuses me about that is that in the 2017 report, the 2017 general purpose, whatever kind of report it is that you do, it's about 160, 170 pages, there's a comment in there that there's, I said, it was a lot of money. It was like $89 million was set aside as a reserve fund for various projects. And I'm assuming that those projects could include water infrastructure repairs as needed as well. So I'm, I'm thinking that there's a pretty good chunk of money sitting, sitting there that is allocated for projects of this very nature. I hope I understood that correctly. And then, I spoke to this at our last meeting, and that was, why, why can our neighbors like Brumfield and Denver provide water services for just a fraction of what Westminster does? I mean, they're able to buy their water, support their infrastructure, pay their employees, and so on, for considerably less than what our rates are going to be. For example, in 2002, or 20, Brumfield's rate for the lowest, well, comparing it to our lowest tier, they don't have tiers. Comparing it to our lowest tier, they would be about 250% cheaper than Westminster. Compared to the highest rate, they will be almost four times cheaper. So that's considerable. And Denver is half the price of Westminster. How can these other cities perform those services and functions at a fraction of the price that you're proposing that Westminster citizens should pay? I think there's something wrong there. It just, it just seems inappropriate that we're that inefficient. And I, I find it difficult to believe that our employees, our city employees, our Water Department employees are not as good as the other cities. I mean, they get paid very well. They have great retirement. I would hope that they're as good as everyone else's are. So I, someday I would like to hear an answer to that. Guess that's all I have, folks. Thank you, Mr. Demott.
Hello there. My name is Bruce Baker. I can give my address, but that's not necessary right now. So on a September 25th, Channel 4 story about the water rate increase in Westminster, an unnamed city official is quoted as saying, "The biggest water users will now begin paying their fair share." Who said that? And is that your concept of fair? How is it fair that, well, the majority of Westminster water users... How is it fair that, well, the majority of Westminster that uses three times as much water as a low user should pay five times as much? How is it fair that a really minority, an eighth of the people in Westminster who use 10 times as much as a low user will have to pay 27 times as much? That's not fair. That is of the discrimination. A tiered water rate is used to reduce water consumption. That's the purpose of it. And yet, there's no shortage of water in Westminster. Westminster does not impose mandatory watering restrictions when other cities in the metro area do, because we have enough water. Previous councils gave the residents of Westminster a valuable legacy of enough water. Moreover, Westminster must beneficially use all of our water, or we risk losing part of it. Council has been repeatedly told we have enough water. At one time, council lowered water rates in the summer to encourage top water users. While, while we have never had to restrict water consumption, top water users are a really population that while beneficially using the water we must use in most years, would, as a reserve, yield a large amount of water if we fall into scarce water use. The biggest water users will now be paying their fair. This shows, well, this statement shows a hatred of high-volume water users. But water is, water use should be considered in proportion to the size of the property that the owner must care for. Bigger properties take more water. A park that uses, a park that is 10 times as big as another park, and both parks using a similar landscape plan, will use 10 times the water. In my neighborhood, lots are large. And yet, we act as responsible stewards, and we use smart design and smart planning. And we do not use proportionally as much water as smaller lot users use. I think the council's forgotten that most of the people of this city share the same values when it comes to conservation, when it comes to stewardship, when it comes to recycling. We believe. And yet, this fair share is not a fair share. It's a punishment. It's a penalty. The biggest fair share, the biggest water users will now begin pairing, paying their fair share. We already use, we already pay multiple times of what low water users use. There is, in my opinion, only a fool or a con man would make such a statement as, "Will now begin paying their fair share." Tiered water rates will reduce water consumption by homeowners throughout the city. They will dry out Westminster even more than it really struggles with today. And wow, will the city waters the public places and the highway mediums. The neighborhoods will be a little more dried out, a little more less appealing, a little less appealing. They'll hurt property values. They will hurt of the desirabilities, and they will hurt our city very much. Please don't do this.
Richard Chamberlain, please.
I always get a crick in my neck looking up to Bruce. So, Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. Tripp, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm really happy to see that the council isn't, in fact, in complete agreement on this issue. That's how it works. So I'm glad we have differences of opinion on the council as well as in the community. I'm also on a fixed income. My wife and I are both retired. And so I don't like to see any of my costs go up. But I've also spoken to every member of this council, and I know how much each member of this council cares about the city. And I also know the skill and the due diligence that our city staff gives to this city, to the residents of this city. And water, in particular, it's necessary for life, which makes it a community resource. It's not just a resource of a few. It's not just a resource for high users, or low users, or median users. It's for everyone. And the council and staff, we've elected you, and you've hired our staff to take care of these things, to pave our streets, to make sure the water is clean and pure and there's enough water, and we have to pay for it. One of the interesting things we've heard in the last couple of years is, looking at mid-century infrastructure across the country, in Colorado and in Westminster, lots of politicians are giving that lip service. And I thank you because you're trying to do something about it. And I think that's where this rate structure comes from. And it's also my understanding that the tier structure has been in place for, what, 40 years? It's not new. And it's also my belief that, not to put anyone down, but having the material resources to use a larger proportion of our water resources, I don't think confers the status of an oppressed minority. On the contrary, I think that confers a responsibility to do more, to conserve and to support the rest of the city's use of water. So to sum up and sit down, I want to thank the city council. I want to thank city staff for the research and the work that staff has done, and then the study that council has done, and looking with a critical eye, and I know Councilor Demont has looked with a very critical eye, and whatever you decide, yea or nay, I will support. Thank you.
Candace Chain, please.
I have a back problem. Okay. I guess I spoke at the last meeting also. I'm a resident about 40 years, and I guess, from what I heard last week, a big issue of mine is transparency. And I feel that a lot of people didn't know about the rate increase. A lot of people still don't know about it. I go to the pool three times a week, and people just don't know about it. I think that a letter should have been sent out in the water bills to everybody, addressing the issue, telling them about the tier program and the rates were going to go up and when the meetings were, so everybody that wanted to come could be here. And I just think that's fair to your residents. I mean, a lot of people have no idea what's going on. You can see it in the blog occasionally, that someone pops up and says something. So I really think that you should notify people in their water bills that this is happening. That's one thing. Northland, and I have the date here, I think it's in July, they raised, well, they had a discussion about raising their water rates, and they were so considerate to their residents, they said they just didn't want to put the burden on their residents. So they were going to graduate, I don't think there's a tier, they're going to graduate 3%, 3%, so they would ease in the increases gradually over a number of years, instead of hitting us all at one year. I just think that that's, a lot of companies do that. Your home insurance does that. They don't want to lose your business, so they don't pile on a large amount in one bill. You know, each year it increases, you know. So they just gradually, to keep your business. And I think the city should look into that, just like Northland, just ease it in a little bit, instead of just piling it on in one year. And I do think the tier program, it makes me feel like I live in California. So brush your teeth, turn the water off. You know, don't let water run. You go into hotels out there, you have little notes all over the place, what you need to do with your water. I don't want to live that way here. You know, and I think that definitely, since we have plenty of water, you guys are just trying to conserve water. And I watch my water all summer. I do it manually on my sprinkler system, so it just doesn't go on automatically. And I conserve, but you know, this summer I had to just make sure that I got enough out there to keep things from dying, just to keep my yard alive. And it was difficult. It was one of the hottest summers. And what are we going to do when we have these bills? And I'm just asking you, let's just think about a different type of program to make us happy and make you guys happy, so you can collect the money. It's not all about money. It's about the whole city and your residents. Okay. The tier, and I think that's it. And the other thing is the mandate that HOAs have. There is a fine if your grass is brown. So everybody, and a lot of people live in HOAs, so we're all going to get, if our grass gets a little brown, they're going to fine us. So if you could just think about a different way, instead of jamming it all in one year, just ease us in. And I think people could take it that way. Anyway, and keep transparency with your residents, because we pay the salaries here. That's it.
Scott Harlan.
This is the only, the second council meeting I've attended. Appreciate letting me take just a few minutes to share a couple of thoughts. I did speak last time, so I won't take much time to introduce myself, but I have been a longtime resident of Westminster, been resident for 32 years. Last, two weeks ago, I wanted to talk a little bit about the chart that the staff showed, where they illustrated that the average bill would go up, I can't remember what it was, $371, something like that, over the course of a year. I think up to about $1,100 total annually. And showed that Westminster would be essentially on par with many of the surrounding areas. I think that was a little misleading. I think you tried to paint the picture you wanted to paint. First of all, that only showed the 2019 increase. It didn't show the 2020. If you show the full impact of the increase and then account for maybe a 4% increase year over year on the other cities, Westminster would only be behind three other cities, Parker, Castle Rock, and Erie, all of which have much, much lower population densities than Westminster. And so if you look at the lot sizes, relative comparative lot sizes, there's no question that Westminster residents are going to be getting a lot less for their money than any other state or any other city in the front range. All right. Before I forget, I want to tell you, share a little story with you. The other day, I was driving up in my Suburban to a gas station in Westminster, and as I pulled up, I was behind a lady in a Mitsubishi Mirage, who has a little subcompact car. And she, I got out and waited, I had five kids in the car and got out, my car, and got out, as I waited for her to fill up. And noticed that, you know, she was, when she got in filling up, I noticed that she'd paid about $25 at $2.85 a gallon for her gas. And as she pulled away, I got back in and pulled forward to the pump, and got up, got in, or got out, swiped my card, and just as I swiped my card, suddenly the price went up to $9.13 a gallon. And I looked at it and said, "Man, I'm going to be paying over $407 to fill up my 44-gallon tank. How can that be?" And I said, "I can't pay that." But just then, I looked across the street, and there was another gas station just across the street in Broomfield. So I drove over, and sure enough, the gas was only priced at $2.30 a gallon there, and I filled up for less than $100. Guess what I'm going to do in the future? And guess what many people in this city are going to do in the future? You know, if this is about conservation, you guys have got it wrong. I mean, right now, the way this tier structure is set up, the only ones that are being really encouraged and forced to conserve are those that have big lots. But you know, we've got responsibility, all of us, all citizens, to care for and be a stewardship, or be a steward for the land or the property that we have, to try to keep it nice and green, and, I'm not going to say green, but pretty, you know, make it beautiful. Nobody else is being penalized like those of us with the larger lots. It's just really crazy. I mean, I don't think any of us object to paying our fair share, nor do we object to paying needed increases for needed infrastructure. But when I use three times as much water as you do, I expect to pay three times as much, not 10 times as much. And that's what's happening here. But it seems like this is a lot more than just about conservation, this tiered structure, it's more about revenue generation. And it seems to me that the approach that the council has chosen is really more aimed about how to go about collecting that revenue than about how we get everybody to conserve. Otherwise, we'd adopt a more equitable approach. And I think that they've decided, for the most part, to pick on those, you know, those that aren't, or less likely to be their partisan supporters, or those that would like, be less likely to help them get elected. I really, you know, I know it's not going to change. I know you guys have set your mind up. I saw that two weeks ago. But I felt like I needed to share with you what I feel and what's in my mind and what's in my heart. You know, I'm going to be one of those guys probably looking for a new gas station.
And apologize if I mispronounce his last name. Nushin Farjidi.
Your pronunciation was just perfect. I am Nushin Farjidi, and I have to say, I agree with some points from both sides of this story. I was talking to a couple of ladies outside the door, and they were talking about their rates being over $100 a month, and mine is, I mean, we live in an average house, and ours is only around $30 to, at the very most, $70, and that's in the very hot summer months. So there must be a way to audit and find out what's going on for those people who have higher rates, and they don't necessarily live on those huge lots. So I just wanted to say that I understand both sides of the situation. But I do understand that we do need to have the funds for infrastructure with this huge population issue that we have in the city of Westminster. And conservation is a huge issue for all of us, and contrary to the belief of some, water is definitely a shared resource, and there's not an abundance of it worldwide. We do need to be very conscious of it. So I would say I back up what you're trying to do, and I do support you in what you're trying to do as far as increasing the rates. Thank you.
Mary Tunberg, I'm sorry.
Without even a two-cent notice in the water bill notifying customers of the first reading on September 24th, not one resident that spoke supported your decision, 5 to 1, for the 20% to 70% water increase that people don't realize was increased January 2018, 8%. So this certainly seems that you're trying to control our water resources, because we've already been shown that it's not about lack of water, it's about the 25% evaluation of our water infrastructure that this increase goes forth. That's my understanding. If people go to primarywater.org, you will find that there are, we are the water planet. We have not, we actually, because we don't drill the way it's described at primarywater.org, you will find we have massive amounts of clean water. So I just want to mention that the evaluation of the 25% of our entire infrastructure that needs to be reviewed, not repaired, but parts of it may, I'm wondering where that thought comes from, because I think that's where we're getting in trouble by saying that we have to do this. You know, this is sold as we've got scarce resources. I don't see the facts to prove that. Then there was without specific locations and the specific projects defined, except that this 25% increase in evaluation, that should all end in four years, meaning, if you just build new stuff, you're not going to have to evaluate it for it falling apart. It's kind of like a house. If the mortgage goes for 30 years, you're not going to tear the house down after 30 years. They can last for hundreds of years. So the point of the story is, you haven't documented your case for this increase on top of January's 8% increase. I just want to mention that, you know, two of these people here are running for other offices. Shannon Bird is running for House of Representatives for the State House, and Emma Pinter is running to be our commissioner for Adams County. And unless this is proven financially that we need to do this, I certainly will not be voting for them. Most people will not even hear about their water increase until after the election. So I urge everybody sitting here that are concerned about this, really, this price control of water resources, to not, you know, to spread the word and to drain the swamp. I don't know if this is coming from, we've never had to reevaluate our infrastructure, 25% of it in a year. So it doesn't, I'm wondering where that comes from. The planning department says that we need to do this? I just, it doesn't make sense to me. The resources that the city gets, the profits that you have from all the fees and everything that you take in is not just $16 million, it's way higher than that.
$133 million.
$133 million in the general fund. And, thank you. And the point is, if this is such a pressing issue, and you've just taken the 8%, I think there's an alternative, because I don't think the people running for office are going to win if you think you can do this under, with no notice, not even a two-cent notice in the water bill. People, you know, I think there are less people here this time than there were last time. But I just don't think it really benefits, and you talk about really caring for the children, you really care, what does this do to families? This is not good, okay? So we know that there's something fishy about this. So please don't raise this. Either you can postpone it or give more evidence, but there isn't, only David Demont voted against this. And we can use those reserve investment unrestricted funds from the profits of people that have already paid. Thank you. (applause) Thank you.
All right. Do I have anyone in the audience who did not sign up that still wishes to speak? Mr. Seymour, come on up. Mr. Carpenter, you want your name back on the list?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get you next.
Good evening, Kent Mayor and Council. My name is Rich Seymour. I live at ninety-seven oh five Kipling Street and I have three separate issues and I'll take them in order of natural flow if you wish. I think there's already been enough said about water. My family, it's just down to two of us now, and so most of our increases will come during peak times in the summertime using drip irrigation systems. We do bump up against that twenty-one thousand now and again, especially in hot summers as this. But I'm looking at a calculation just on the water rate increase, just water itself, forty-two percent for peak times. So May, June, July, hopefully not pass that most years. But that's forty-two percent through twenty, twenty twenty. So I ask that we make some considerations as far as the percentage on that change. Then the next issue as we flow downhill is the wastewater issue and the current moratorium that we have here looking at statements that were made by staff in reviewing our wastewater and another critical component, water is life, and then you also have to move what's left over. From a safety standpoint, we can't violate EPA, we can't violate state laws, we, we don't want to be fined as a city. So that's, that's a critical issue. But I think too, we have to be careful on how we couch the results of our growth that we've had, some of our growth that we've had north of ninety-second in the affected moratorium area was well on the books late twenty-fourteen, early twenty-fifteen. And I think too, that if we work hard to promote growth, reasonable growth, responsible growth, we shouldn't be surprised by it. So I think we, we all hope in the business community that north of ninety-second, we can work to a quick resolution of the moratorium so we can move ahead with reasonable growth. Then the last thing as far as my, my flow here too, I have concerns about one issue that's on the WEDA agenda later today and then for City Council is, is an incentive package for the Aspire that Sherman and Associates will be putting together for the city of Westminster. And looking at package, including the most recent two million dollar loan that we're gonna make to them, we are gonna be getting five percent interest return on that. But that total package amounts to just under sixteen million dollars in incentives for a builder that boasts over two billion dollars in their inventory. So I think we may have gone a little overboard on that one, the delay in the process. I'm not sure where the delay came in, it just in the notes, it said that delay cost Sherman and Associates eight million dollars. There has been a substantial increase in this market, so that is partly understandable. I don't think the citizens of Westminster or our dollars in WEDA should offset that, that delay on a, on a business like that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and apologize for the confusion. When you said they removed the agenda item up, I thought that's when we were gonna be speaking, so. Anyhow, the reason I'm up here is to talk about communication. First, you know, we've got the communication regarding the water rate increase, you know, twenty-three to seventy-three percent, that's huge. Now, I've been on the Planning Commission since twenty-eleven, I am here as a private individual, not representing the Commission, but we've received communications based on our comprehensive land use plan, that we have enough water, we have enough sewer. Every time, as long as it was meeting our comprehensive plan, then we're in good shape. And then about two years ago was the first time we ever had, say, well, this may affect our water. That was for the senior living facility that was proposed at the Church Rant site at Old Watts. And that, so I started asking questions then, yeah, that, well, there could be a water rights issue in the future. So, and then, and then of course, the moratorium came because of the, I'll call it the aha moment, someone else used a different term for that on the, but that was on the sewer interceptor. So now we have a moratorium on development part of the city. And that was kind of a surprise. So that's, so it sounds like there's a communication issue and I know that there's some mistakes there. And we're working to correct those. The second communication is I, I totally get conservation. I mean, we all conserve, I recycle, I reuse glass jars and I reuse a whole bunch of things. I reuse Starbucks cups sometimes even. And, yeah, I know, it's weird. And, that's okay. But the, here's the thing, infrastructure is a fixed cost, so we start conserving, then we're, our rates are actually gonna go even higher because we're not gonna be able to pay for the replacement of these infrastructure costs. So it's, yes, it's going to work for, in the short term, but in the long term, we'll still have to continue having massive rate increases even if we conserve to the level that we need to conserve. And then, three, we're, you know, there's communication about, I, about all these incentives we're giving. And we're giving, so we're, number one, I, we're, we're looking at buying a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar Jumbotron for the downtown. I get that's probably a different bucket, but still, we're, we're spending that. We're giving a whole bunch of incentives, as Mr. Seymour said about the Aspire project. We're giving loans for tap fees. And that's communicating something too. And I think what that's communicating is that we're, we are, we are putting the growth of Westminster on the backs of the current residents instead of putting it where it belongs, on those who are densifying and developing in our city. And this concerns me. And trust me, I'm, I'm an engineer, I'm in the development business. I, I see what tap fees are. In Loveland, we have a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar, one-and-a-half-inch water tap for a hotel, for example. That's huge. That's a huge investment. And yet these pencil, if, you know, with the price of land going up and the desirability of our area, yes, this is happening. I just want to make sure that we're paying our fair share and actually saving our infrastructure and making sure that it's robust enough. And then finally, let's, you know, there was an article not too long ago about the Brighton City Council where they have raised, they had a very large rate increase last year, and now they're wondering where all the money went. Well, I get that they're, I get that money gets spent, it happens, and we're gonna be, so the communication I'm here to say is that we're gonna be watching and we're gonna make sure that this money is being spent where it's supposed to be spent. So, you know, I would, my recommendation is that we vote, that you vote no or you make some modifications, and if not, we're going, you know, we're gonna be keeping our eyes open.
Chris Stimson, one eleven thirty-three Vrain Street, Mr. Mayor, City Council, councilors. Yes, I wasn't expecting this tonight, so this is a bit off the cuff. Yeah, there's a lot of attitude about rights and wrongs. I've lived here, what, seven and a half years and have, I guess, an average-sized lot. And in that time, I've converted maybe two-thirds, three-quarters of it from grass to gravel and, and stone, which doesn't need much watering, fortunately, needs weeds pulling out of it. I mean, that's not to pat my own self on the head, but the point being is, this isn't coastal California, this isn't Connecticut, this isn't Kentucky or Tennessee. This is, we're a, we're on the edge of the prairie here. And if you go out of a residential development anywhere around here into the undeveloped prairie, you'll find it doesn't look like Wimbledon Center Court or Lord's Cricket Ground. It's, it's, it's pretty, pretty spare. So I knock on a lot of doors around this, this part of the state and I go up pathways with, you know, really well-developed, well-watered lawns on either side of me, sometimes with these waterfalls coming down. And my point about saying what I do in my yard is to say that that is more appropriate, I believe, to the kind of environment we live in and the kind of, the kind of climate we not only have here in this dry state, but the kind of climate we're gonna continue to increase to have. I've heard people say we've got plenty of water. I'm not sure, you know, let's assume that we do. There's this thing called climate change going on. In a few years' time, we're not gonna be able to say we have plenty of water, and what the council is doing now may be a darn good thing. Enough of that, I think most of the objections tonight are about the style, the tier-based style in which you have proposed to do this. I can say to people that this was not an arbitrary decision of the council. I don't know whether you know, you folks who say you've only been here once in your lives, but if you come here every other Monday, this council and staff meet in that room over there and they go into huge detail on, on proposals like this, whether they should do it, whether they should not, and they get very deeply into it and very concerned about what it means for the citizens. I, when was it, one week ago or three weeks ago, this, this, this came up next door, but I do remember that that meeting was very long and very, very well discussed about the, you know, how much this water rate should go up. It was not an arbitrary decision. I really actually, after all that, I really actually had only one thing to say, which is to the folks behind me, so I guess I'll twist the microphone a bit.
Chris, continue your listening.
You can still hear me? Good.
No, just come this way.
Okay, okay. My point is, someone came up to the microphone and said that the council doesn't listen to the citizens. Okay, I think it was about a year ago, the proposal for re-regulating the waste disposal and recycling in the city of Westminster came up. There were more people here that night even than there are tonight, and I think that went on till when? Two in the morning, Mr. Mayor? One in the morning, two in the morning? I thought it was an excellent proposal, a great presentation was done, it was a good idea. The council listened to, I don't know what the proportions were, probably eighty, ninety percent of the people speaking against that proposal. You know what? That proposal didn't happen. So please don't come up to this microphone and say that the city council doesn't listen to the citizens. Thank you.
One last opportunity. Anyone who has not had an opportunity to speak, would like to come forward? Yes, sir, I'll get you a second, okay?
Hello, my name is Kevin Frank, I live in nine-two-two-one Lamar Street. This is my first time here. I just want to say that I went on vacation. I have a three-bedroom, two-bath house. My yard is only five feet wide. I use a drip system, I don't use a sprinkler system, I grow vegetables in my backyard. I went on vacation for two weeks in July, so there was nobody at my house, and I came back and my water bill was ninety-eight dollars a month. Okay? It was seventy-eight, then it was ninety-eight. So with not being there for two weeks out of the month, I thought that was preposterous. I think that, my opinion is, when I first moved to Westminster nineteen years ago, everywhere I looked, there was some open space, you can see, that's the, you know, why I bought my house. Now, everywhere I look, there's an apartment building, there's another house, there's another building, there's no more space. And I think that's why our inference structure that you guys say we don't have enough money for is because we're building that for everybody else. So, I mean, that's my own personal opinion, I'm not sure, but I know that for my house, to have a hundred-dollar-a-month water bill is outrageous. And it's gonna go up again, and I was never aware that it was gonna go up in July. Nobody told me, nobody sent out, I didn't get a message in my water bill saying, hey, your water is gonna go up eight percent. I didn't know that. Now it's gonna go up again. And you guys are all responsible, we pay tax money, they're supposed to be reserved for that. Where it goes, I don't know, but it's obviously not going for our water infrastructure. That's all.
Dear Mr. Mayor and councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. With the exception of Councilor Demott, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. You and your staff deliberately and intentionally hid this water increase from us residents. You never notified us properly. You fabricated this water emergency during a non-election year for councilors. If there was a true water emergency, you would not have approved Dakar Estates Development and other high-density developments in the northern side of town. The ethical way to handle this increase would have been to notify all of us residents in our water bills at least six months before any public meetings were held. Many former councilors have spoken to you in this chamber, reminding you that for many years, city staffs have told former councils that the water systems were designed and built out to support the city to full build-out. Who is lying to us? Those former staffs and councilors, councils, or the, or the current staff and council? Whatever the answer, this water rate issue needs more time. All residents need to be notified about this increase and given appropriate time to digest and debate this increase. If you are not willing to delay this rate tonight until all residents are properly notified, I move that all of you, except Councilor Demott, except Councilor Demott, be recalled.
For the record, sir, can you read who you are?
Dave Beeman, one-four-seven-five-seven, postal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beeman.
I'm Christine Ireland, I'm at one-three-eight-one-six Lexington Place. I've been in Westminster for thirty-four years since I moved from college. If this is all about conservation, the council should put in a, in a, in place a rate structure that encourages all to conserve rather than just those with larger lots and water needs. Every homeowner should be allocated the same basic amount of water plus an additional supplement amount during summer months that is variable according to the size of their lot. Water usage within the allocated amounts would be billed at the same fixed rate for everyone. Any amount used above the basic and supplemental allocated amounts would be billed at a higher rate. That approach would be fair and provide incentive for all to conserve. Unfortunately, the city council appears not to be interested in a fair approach that proportionally shares the burden of capital improvement costs and provides an equal incentive for all to conserve. The reality is that those of us with larger lots have the responsibility and stewardship to care for and beautify a portion of Westminster that may be equal in size and tasked to three or four homeowners of smaller lots. Yet our water costs to make our yards look equally as nice will cost two to three times as much as it costs for three or, or four of other homeowners combined. And the net result will be that people in my neighborhood will pay a thousand to two thousand more per year, and that's not just our water bill, it's our green belts as well. So it'll be even more than sewer and in twenty, and water and sewer in twenty-twenty than they do today. And many of them are like me, who have been in their homes for years and are no more equipped to pay the kind of increase than those in new nearby neighborhoods with smaller lots and water needs. And like my husband said, I get, I moved to my yard, not in my house, not to be pompous and not to show off my yard because I have five children. And I want them to have a place to play, a place to be safe, and it had nothing to do with showing off. If you think people in larger lots are there just to show off, it's not right. I was there for my family. And you don't care about families in this community anymore. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Do we have anyone else that has not had an opportunity to come forward tonight that would like to, as part of the citizen communication? Okay. We'll move on to the next item. A report of the city officials, Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight, we have a long agenda. Thank you.
Okay. So. This opportunity for city officials is done. City council, you have any comments? All right, next item up on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is an item that is set up as a routine matter of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. We have to review the items on the consent agenda, and no House member has asked for any item to be removed. At this point, I will accept the motion. Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda items 8A through 8F.
Okay, I have a second, Ms. Sykes.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda as proposed under the motion, please signify by a vote of your lights. And I get there. Okay, motion carries on a five-o vote. All right, moving on to the next item, item nine, we have no appointments or resignations tonight, so we'll move on to item eleven. On our old business, as we said, we will move the agenda up. This will be a second reading of Council's Bill number thirty-seven, refers to 2019, 2020, water and wastewater rate recommendations. Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Councilor's Bill number thirty-seven on second reading, implementing water, sewer, and reclaimed water rate adjustments for 2019 and 2020 by amending sections eight-seven-one, eight-seven-seven, eight-seven-eight, eight-seven-nine, eight-seven-eleven, eight-eight-one, eight-eight-five, eight-eight-twelve, eight-twelve-one, eight-twelve-seven, and eight-twelve-eight of the Westminster Municipal Code effective January 1st, 2019, and January 1st, 2020, respectively.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, so any discussion? Mr. Demont?
First, I'd like to thank staff again for all the questions they've answered through this process. I've probably asked possibly more than everybody else, if not multiple times, everybody put together. Not that they didn't ask good questions, but I have had a lot of questions about this issue and have remained critical of it. I would also like to say that I think everybody up here very much deeply cares about what happens with our water infrastructure to make sure that you all have clean, drinkable water in the city. With that being said, in my view, this continues to make it harder for people in Westminster to be able to afford the city that I've called home my whole life, that all of you call home. And that's my problem with it. It's not that I don't think that we have needs, it's not that I don't think that, you know, this is an important issue. It's how, how do we pay for our needs? And I've asked continually for other ways to pay for it. I also, you know, truly believe if you're going to vote no on something, that you should have a good reason why and share with your colleagues and your, and the staff why I'm opposing this. And that's, that's it. I think that you could have other ways. I've proposed other ways, I've asked for other ways, I've pleaded with my colleagues, let's look at other ways to pay for this. And at the end of the day, we can't continue as a city to always just go on the backs of the ratepayers. At some point in the future, if they don't do it now, we're going to have to find other ways to pay for it. One of my big problems with this rate increase is, we've been told it doesn't get us there. This isn't the end road. This isn't putting us in a place where we're actually going to pay for the needs of the future. They'll be back for more. I like to know what that end game is. And to date, I haven't heard what that end game is, I don't think we know what that end game is. But I think that the citizens of the city deserve to know what it is, the people who pay taxes and pay rates in the city deserve to know what it is. And I think we need to do better as a city.
Ms. Pinter?
Yes, thank you so much. There were a couple of questions. People, I want to thank everyone who came out. People asked some really great questions. And some of the things were covered in the staff report, but I know that some of you might not have had an opportunity to read that or cover that. Some people were asking about open space and what's happening with open space. You should know that the city highly prioritizes open space and green spaces. We have a permanent fifteen percent open space in the city. And when you look at our parks and our other lands that are set aside, we have over thirty percent set aside as park or open space or some kind of green space that is preserved for the future, which is quite a high percentage of our city that is preserved to protect that natural beauty going forward. There were a number of people who asked questions about twenty-five percent, and I just want to call out, because that was something that was mentioned a couple of times in our staff report. One of the things that is concerning is that twenty-five percent of our water and sewer infrastructure is at or beyond its useful life. This means that a lot of our costs are coming due at the same time. As several people have noted, and even this building was built just a little over thirty years ago. And anyone who's owned a house knows that, my mom used to have this saying, that you buy a car, in the first five years, you're paying your car payment, and the next five years, you're paying what would be your car payment in maintenance fees to keep that same car running. And we've kind of run into similar situations, whether you own a home or you own a water and sewer infrastructure. And now, because we did so much building thirty-five, forty years ago, a lot of that is coming due for repairs all at once. Some people asked, where does the money go? I would strongly direct you to read our lovely, fascinating budget. It's all published on the website. If you have any problems finding something in the budget, give us a call, give me a call. Our phone numbers and our email addresses are on the city's website, be happy to direct you to anything. I asked for a quick summary from staff, and they said that the biggest place you can find what we've spent on water infrastructure in the past few years, which is quite a lot, is through our capital improvement budget and what we've done over the past few years. And if you need further information, let us know. We also got a lot of questions on people living on a fixed income or a limited income or both. Just so you know, if you live in the city and you qualify for LEAP energy assistance, you probably also qualify for water assistance. We have water assistance programs for our fixed and low-income folks. Again, that's on the website. If you can't find it, let one of us know. And if you have a large lot, we have a number of city programs from leak inspection, somebody mentioned an audit, we have a leak inspection program. We actually have really great zero-scaping grants, whether you are a homeowner or you're an HOA, whatever you might need, there's large and small-scale grant programs available to move towards drought-resistant water, like light water using plants. Please let us know what other programs you might be looking for. One of the things that I just want to call out in general is, thank you to our staff who have, I have watched the very comprehensive and detailed reports come through. And every resident who has emailed, I have made sure to respond to that email. I know our staff has personally responded to several of those emails. This has been a comprehensive process. It's been up for study session multiple times with increasing public comment. Thank you all for coming out. If I missed something in taking notes, like I said, my cell phone number is on the website. Send us an email, I'm sure any one of these councilors would be happy to get back to you as well.
Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everybody in this room. It's really important for us as council members to understand where our public is at and to be informed by you. And obviously, this is an issue that is hitting you wrong. And so thank you for taking the time to let us know that. And don't think that just if we don't vote the way you wanted us to, it doesn't mean you weren't heard. It is important to us, and it says a lot about your commitment to the city that you're willing to come on a Monday night and speak for five minutes. So thank you for being here. I also, I know we've talked about this for a long time, and for some of you that have come to multiple meetings, this may seem repetitive, and I apologize for that. But for those of you who have said this is your first time at a city council meeting, I want to speak so that you can hear as well. This was, this rate and this vote tonight is the end product of a lot of intentional planning and consideration by both the staff and this council. Earlier tonight, former councillor Mark Kaiser spoke about the rate increases that were done during his tenure, and those did happen, and those did help us continue to invest in our system and make sure that we could do maintenance needs. And it was something, when I first got on council, they were very proud of how our, the amount of breaks that we had in our city went down significantly when they started employing that kind of frequent rate increases. And that was a great step forward. But our city has continued to age, and our infrastructure has continued to age. And so while those rate increases were helpful, they weren't really based on the actual age and condition of our system. And so the first thing that we did was we removed our rate increases being tied to CPI, the Consumer Price Index, because that really wasn't connected at all to the drivers of what costs for repairs of our system are connected to. And so after that, we embarked upon a two-year study to look at the actual age and condition of our entire system to figure out what are the costs that we're faced with, what are the critical things we need to repair, and what does the price take on that? And then how are we going to fund it? And so there's two ways that we fund our wastewater and water system, and that's through TAP fees to developers and then rates to all of us as residents and consumers, I'm sorry, commercial businesses also pay rates. And so at the end of this two-year study, as councillor Pinter has already alluded and many people referenced, we found shockingly that based off of the condition of our utility, over twenty-five percent of it was at or beyond its useful life. So our staff took some, a hard look and prioritized what really needs to be done, what's critical, came up with a dollar amount with consultants, and I should say that nationally-recognized consultants, what is the best way to structure the rate increase? I've heard a lot of comments about the rate tier system, and it's confusing to me. We have had tiers in Westminster since the seventies. It is not new to have tiers. And so, yes, there are going to be rate increases, and we are trying to make sure that everybody is not penalized, no one is penalized, but people are paying their fair share for what they use. I know that councillor Demont did make a suggestion that we use general fund dollars. I personally have a hard time having taxpayers subsidize my high use. I think if I make a choice to live in a house that has a larger yacht and a lot, and I do have a larger lot, I should pay for my, the burden that I put on our utility system. I shouldn't ask any other taxpayer in the city to pay for that. That is my choice, my responsibility. So I just wanted to make sure people realize the tier system was there for a while. We have an enterprise fund, that means that these dollars have to stay within the system. They aren't used for general fund, this is not a cash grab, they have to stay within the utility. And our charter dictates that we have to set rates in a way that covers our operational costs. I've heard a lot of concerns in regards to how we communicated this, and that has not gone on deaf ears. And I promise you, we will improve that, because people do not want to be caught off guard. And hitting people in their pocketbook, budgets are hard. We're a single-income family, budgets are hard. So it is nice to have enough time to plan for these things. And I've heard that, I think it was Candace, thank you so much, I agree with you, we will improve. This is the traditional way that we have promoted the rate increases. We can improve. So I don't want people to think that there, any of this is opaque. This is a very transparent, all of the projects that are listed, you can, you can see exactly where the money is going. And we're happy, if you want help, seeing exactly what they are. You can reach out to any member on this council, everybody here is willing to do this, to take the time to make sure that you see where the money is going. I don't expect any of you in this room to be happy with this decision, but I have a conscience. I am in this role because I have to do what I think is best for the long-term health of my city. And investing in a core service is, to me, just the minimum threshold of what I can do. And if it costs me my job on council, I know you said you'll recall me, that is a consequence I'm willing to pay for what I think is right. And I, I can't in good conscience vote some way because I'm scared of losing my job. I have to do what I think is right based off of the data I've been given. For those that are accusing my colleagues of being partisan, I think it's one of the bravest things I've ever seen, as they're putting themselves out there, to still be such strong stewards of the city that they're willing to do such a hard vote right now. To me, that shows their character and their strength and their dedication to Westminster. And I'm sorry that there isn't an easier way, but this is, this is the only way I can see forward, is to vote yes.
Any other comments? I would tell you that, as you've heard from our councilmember, you've heard testimony from both pros and cons of what's being proposed. Again, this is not something that we took lightly. These are decisions that are hard to be made. But that's why we are sitting up here, because we were told, go make the hard decisions. And not everybody's going to be happy about it. We can't make everybody happy on a hundred percent of the things that we do. Somebody will not be happy. But in order to live up to our requirement to provide you core services, we have to maintain systems to deliver those services, whether it's streets, whether it's sewer, whether it's water, regardless of whether it's fire protection or police protection. Those are the core elements that we are bound to provide to you as a full-service city. As some of the councilmembers have said, what is on the list is what's being paid for by this rate increase. In the future, what goes beyond 2020 into 2021, 22, if someone has a crystal ball that they can answer those questions for us, please bring it to council next week, we'd like to borrow it. Because we can't tell you what the future holds. What we can tell you is what are the needs that we see today. Twenty-five percent of our system has outlived its life. We cannot guarantee that without doing the repairs and the upgrades to the system. That's to keep us whole. We have a whole lot of projects that are on the list that we are not funding, that still need to be done. And we will have to look at those every year to see if something has changed in this condition to the point that it is now having to be considered as a critical piece. As Mr. Demont has made recommendations, we have considered each recommendation he has made, and we are not convinced that those are available to us. We are doing the ones that we think that we can provide the funding for, get the work done as soon as possible, make sure that the delivery to you and your households, just like us sitting up here, is done in an equitable manner. Will some people have higher water bills in the future than others? Yes. That depends upon your consumption. And what you decide to do with your properties is totally your call. As far as the city facilities, almost all of our parks, our recreation facilities, our golf courses, trail areas that we irrigate are not done with potable water, it is done with reclaimed water, so that we don't have the same issue with trying to use that much. Every city department has to budget for water. Every group within the city has to pay a water rate the same as on a commercial rate that you do. No one's getting out of this. But what I will tell you is, these are hard decisions to be made now, and every council that I have ever been associated with at one time or another has had to make a hard decision. That's why they're here. Whether you agree with them or not, you put them here to make decisions for you and on your behalf. And as I think you've heard repeatedly, we have been looking at this issue for some time, it's not taken lightly. So however the vote goes tonight, it's being done with the best interest of the city in mind by each individual councillor and what they feel is the right thing for the city. No one is making a personal issue out of this, it's what every councilmember has taken an oath to do and do the best they can for the city that they're serving. Mr. Tripp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council and members of the audience. I'd like to just make a couple of really brief comments. I want to, first of all, thank all the citizens that came out tonight and gave us feedback and have given us feedback over the course of the past several weeks and months, really, on this issue. We've answered lots of questions and we've had good commentary tonight. And I want you to know, I appreciate it, and I want you to know that we were attentive as a staff and made lots of notes. There are some areas that we could have done much better on and will work to do better on in the future in communicating on these kinds of issues to make sure you understand the need. That's one thing I wanted to say to you and to thank you. I want to thank the staff, many of whom are sitting in this room, for the hard work and diligent work and intelligent work they did in preparing a recommendation to me. And I want to thank the council for giving me the privilege of serving in this role. And I just want to remind those that may not understand it, this is my recommendation. In this form of government, the city council hires a chief executive to bring them recommendations from a skilled and trained staff, to first of all, to hire a skilled and trained staff that understand this work and the technical details of this work. And we have the best in America here. We have people who care very deeply about this city, and this was a tough one. This was a tough one, when they brought to me what the needs they believed to be would be in terms of a recommendation on these rate increases. And I know that when we had that meeting and discussed it, everybody was concerned. And I know that when we had that meeting and discussed it, everybody was concerned on the city staff about having to make these sorts of rate increases. But I have to tell you, I just felt obligated. I felt very strong that it was the right thing to do, that the safety and security of our drinking water system and our sewage, and our sewage system in our community was of paramount importance. And it was important to be courageous enough to say, this is what we needed to move forward in this community and make the recommendation to council. They ultimately get to make this final decision, but I have to say, they don't put the time and the hours necessarily and have the background in some of these specific issues of the staff that we have, and I don't either. We all rely on those folks, and we have the best folks in these areas anywhere that I've ever worked over 40 years in this business. They made solid recommendations, and I want to tell you, we're doing it because we care very deeply about the future of this city, and we're doing the best job we can to make sure that we have a safe and secure future. And again, I do want you to know how much we appreciate you coming out and the feedback, and we all work for you. You know, we're accessible and available to you, and as we move forward, if you've got questions or comments, please don't ever hesitate to call. Thank you.
All right, council, at this point, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please. Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott.
No.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries on a four-to-one vote. Next item on the agenda is item B. This is Councilor's Bill 38. Ms. Sykes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 38 on second reading, implementing water, wastewater, and reclaimed tap fee adjustments for 2019 and 2020 by amending Sections 8-7-1, 8-7-3, 8-7-4, 8-7-5, and 8-8-5 of the Westminster Municipal Code effective January 1, 2019, and January 1, 2020, respectively.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on this item by council? If there's no discussion, Ms. Parkins is also a roll call vote.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott.
No.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Motion passes on a four-one vote. Council move on to item 10, I'm sorry, 11C. This is Council's Bill 39. Hang on just a second, trying to get back to the menu. All right, Ms. Sykes.
I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 39 on second reading, authorizing the city manager to execute a finance agreement with Westminster Station Regeneration LLC in substantially the same form as presented to council for the development of Lot 2, Block 1, Westminster Station, filing number one.
Ms. Byrd.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion by council? Mr. Demott.
I just want to reiterate what I said last meeting, that I don't think, considering the rate increase that we're doing, that we should be loaning $1.5 million for somebody's tap fees.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Demott.
No.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Motion also carries on a four-one vote. Based on where we are at this point, and we've already been at it for, right at two hours, I'm going to call a short recess, and we can have a short file break for those
Yes, I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 40, I was reading, appropriating funds for the 2019-2020 budget.
Ms. Byrd.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion by council? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote. Ms. Parker.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott.
No.
Pinter.
Yes.
Motion carries on a four-one vote. Next item up is... Next item up is Ms. Sykes.
Oh, sorry. Yep. I can move to adopt resolution number 27 establishing the 2019 and 2020 pay plans.
Ms. Byrd.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion by council? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote, Ms. Parker if you will.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd. Yes. Demott.
Yes.
Pinter. Yes. Sykes. Yes.
Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Next item is a revision to the employment agreement with Tiffany Sores for her services as presiding municipal judge, is item B1. Come on. Ms. Byrd.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a revised employment agreement with Tiffany L. Sores for her services as presiding municipal judge for 2019 with an effective date of January 1, 2019, and an automatic renewal for 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023 unless terminated pursuant to the terms of the agreement.
Mr..
Second.
I have a motion in the second, is any discussion on item B1? Seeing none, this is a vote with your lights or your buttons. And the motion carries on a 5-0 vote. All right, next item up is item B2. Ms. Pinter.
Yes, I move to pass Council's Bill number 41 on first reading, setting the salary for presiding judge, presiding municipal judge, Sores, for 2019.
Mr. Demott.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, is any discussion by council? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote, Ms. Parker if you will.
Byrd. Yes. Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes. Yes. Atchison.
Yes. Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Next item is item 10C. Ms. Pinter.
Yes, I move to pass Council's Bill number 42 on first reading, appropriating funds received from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $579,519.
Ms. Sykes.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, is any discussion by this item on council? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, Ms. Parker if you will.
Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Next item is authorization of the reallocation of $2 million from the Westminster Urban Center Urban Investment Project Investment Parking and Other accounts to the Westminster Economic Development Authority.
Didn't that get pulled?
No.
No.
This is further down.
We're going to pull, uh...
Yeah. Okay. Sure I'll get back there, Ms. Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the reallocation of $2 million from the Westminster Center Urban Investment Project Investment Parking and Other account to the transfers to Westminster Economic Development Authority account in the General Capital Improvement Fund.
Ms. Byrd.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second, is any discussion by council on item D1? If not, this is a vote with your buttons, please. Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Next item is authorization of the city manager to execute an amended and restated development agreement with Aspire Westminster Apartments LLC, is item D2. Ms. Byrd.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute an amended and restated development agreement with the Aspire Westminster Apartments LLC and the Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as presented to council for the development of Lot 2 of Block B3 in downtown Westminster.
Second.
Ms. Pinter. Is there any discussion by council? In my statement on this, I have been pretty upfront with the council and the others that, in my opinion, this is not the appropriate use of our funds on this particular project. I have serious concerns about the amount that's involved in this as an incentive program, and also the sustainability of this developer with recent issues that we've discovered as far as other properties that they've purchased in the city, as well as some other activities which we are going to continue to discuss. I will be voting no on this particular project. Ms. Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that you are a conservative steward of the city's money. I am going to vote yes. This is actually an old agreement that we have kind of retooled and are extending. This is a really critical portion of our downtown, and as you know, the city actually owns this downtown. And so we're investing in the city when we invest in this project, making sure that this project is the catalyst that will allow us to see our vision to completion and demand the highest land sales prices for the parcel. So to me, this is that initial investment that will reap benefits in the future, and I find it very important to do. I appreciate the mayor's position, but I will be voting yes.
Other comments from council? Mr. Demott.
Being one of the new people on, I wasn't around when this first agreement was made. So in constraints that we've talked through, different things with our budget and our utility and different needs that we have not been able to meet because of budget constraints, I don't see this as a good use of the taxpayers' base, so I will also be voting no.
Other comments from council? Okay, council, this is a vote with your buttons. And the motion passes on a 3-2 vote. Item 10E, because of the requirement of a certain percentage of the people who must be here, we do not have enough people here to vote tonight, so item 10E, council number 43 will be pulled and table for the...
Do you need a motion to put it on the table? No. Yes. They're nodding. Yes, no?
I'm looking at Mr. ... Okay.
I would recommend one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to table item 10E. Do you need the full title?
Just Council's Bill number 43.
Council Bill's number 43.
Second.
Ms. Sykes.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to table Council's Bill number 43 to a later date to be determined, and we will bring that back at a later date after further discussion. All those in favor for the tabling? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries on a 5-0. Next item up is item 10F1, Council's Bill number 44. Ms. Pinter.
Yes, I move to pass Council's Bill number 44 on first reading, appropriating a reallocation of funds from the water fund in the amount of $4 million to the wastewater fund by initial fund transfer.
And Ms. Sykes.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any other discussion, Ms. Sykes?
No.
Or Mr. Demott?
I just want to thank staff for continuing to be diligent to make sure that they're staying on top of the things in the Big Dry Creek interceptor.
Okay, any other comments by council?
No.
This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker if you will.
Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Next item. This is for a contract with Granite Inliner LLC in an amount not to exceed $4 million for some interceptor sewer repair project. And Ms. Byrd.
I move to find, based on the recommendation of the city manager, that the public interest will be best served by approving a negotiated sole source contract with Granite Inliner LLC in an amount not to exceed $4 million to provide cured-in-place pipelining and manhole rehabilitation for the Big Dry Creek parallel 30-inch interceptor sewer project.
Ms. Sykes.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, are there discussions by council? Seeing none, will you please vote with your lights? And the motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Next item was adoption of resolution 28 regarding city positions on state and local ballot measures, and as we discussed previously, we are pulling two items out of that so that can be further discussion, and that will be Proposition 110 and Amendment 73. All other items on the staff memorandum will stay as defined. Ms. Pinter.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution number 28 regarding city positions on 2018 state and local ballot measures.
Hey, Mr. Demott.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion by council? Ms. Pinter, are you still up?
No, just for the roll call.
Mr. Demott?
No.
Okay. Sorry. I wanted to make sure. This is a roll call vote. Again, remember, this does not include Proposition 110 or Amendment 73. Ms. Parker.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
All right, somewhere, come on. Now, moving to the two items that were moved, we'll first go with Proposition 110. Can I have a motion on that item alone? Ms. Sykes.
Um, just trying to...
You got to wing it.
Yeah, so I move to adopt a...
Support.
A city, a position of support on Proposition 110.
Okay, Ms. Pinter.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for the support of Proposition 110 as defined by the city, staff memorandum that we have previously discussed. Are there any comments? Ms. Sykes.
Yeah, I just want to really quick, for those of you that aren't as well-versed in what all the ballot numbers are, 110 is called Let's Go Colorado, and it would help us fund transportation for our state with an increased sales tax that would allow some bonding. I think it's really important for us, we have a really aging road infrastructure that needs to be fixed, but we already have a very fiscally constrained state budget, and we don't want to take away from our schools or other state needs in order to fix that, so this would give us a solution.
Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to members of council for allowing us to pull this off. This was an item I wanted to pull off, because I'm not sure where I stand on it yet. And so being that I can't tell you that I'm going to vote for it, I can't expect the citizens to vote for it on my word. So I'm going to continue to do my homework on this one, as well as I hope everybody else does, but I'll be voting no on this measure just because I'm not sure where I am at on Prop 110.
Okay, Ms. Pinter.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that part of the factor in deciding to support Proposition 110, commonly known as Let's Go Colorado, is this very, very strong and robust bipartisan coalition of business groups, as well as the really intense discussions that went on during the legislature to support hopefully future bonding and other expenditures if this were to pass. So I know it's been really comprehensive stakeholder process, and a lot of that is documented on their website, which you can find by just searching for Let's Go Colorado.
Other comments by council? Just kind of trying to summarize the ballot issue 110. This is a shareback, and it's the first time that we've ever had a shareback on an election for a ballot issue coming back to local authority. Under the current proposal, Proposition 110, 45% of the funds raised under this initiative would go to CDOT to work on roads and bridges. 20% would go to the counties. 20% comes back to the local municipalities, and 15% is set aside for multimodal. Under the multimodal, we can use our local shareback to additionally contain funds for us to use for other things like trails, bike riding, trains, whatever we want to do. So that's, and that's local match then is provided to us through the shareback of the 20%. This has been five years in the making. We have made multiple attempts to get ballots referred by the state legislature. Last year, we got within one vote of getting a measure referred to the people to let them vote on it, but it was failed by one vote. Last year was the first time in the history of Colorado that we've had a statewide coalition that all supported a tax increase for transportation. Everything contained in this proposition mandates that the money may only be used for transportation, can be transferred to no other use, and in comparison to the ballot measure 109, which brings no revenue stream, requires the state legislature to find $3 billion out of the general fund that they can't find over the last five years, means that there are programs such as mental health, medical, senior services, other activities that they're going to have to look at cutting in order to meet the state ballot requirement if 109 passes. The difference with 110 is six tenths of a cent, six cents of every $10 goes back to this community, and just in the first year, it's over a million dollars to us, and this is a 20-year sunset. So over 20 years, we get money back to use to fix our roads, our bridges, our transportation needs. Now, is that enough to fix everything? No. But it's a lot more than we have today, and it's a guaranteed stream income back into the state that they don't have today. Now, there's a lot of ads on TV that talk about the nice things, and they make fun of the visitors who've come to Colorado, but this is a sales tax, so everyone who uses it buys something regardless of where you're from, pays into this fund. Under the previous administration, what they were looking at was raising gas tax that has never passed in 20 years. To say that we would pass a gas tax today would be basically nothing. The efficiency of cars today compared to what they were 20 years ago is greatly different. And then we have the electric vehicle. So putting a gas tax up, which even the federal government hasn't touched in 20 years, does not get us anywhere. We would almost be going in arrears. So this is the one and only opportunity we see over the last five years to get some money coming in to fix transportation. CDOT has a budget estimate of critical projects of $9 billion. Prop 110 would get $6 billion of that. 109 would tell the general fund, you've got to cough up $3 billion, but yet the project list on there equates to $6 billion. So even if they pass 109, they don't have enough money to pay for the projects that are defined in that proposition. This is a big deal for a statewide group. Myself, sitting here as the mayor, I will tell you, I have been intimately involved in the statewide coalition and most every transportation group in the metro area. We have not been able to come up with another measure. We've not been able to find another way to help fund this. So the work I've done, the work this council has supported, the work our staff has worked on, not only here in Westminster but the entire region, this is our one and only chance. I am very afraid that if we do not pass 110 at the vote in November, we will not have transportation funding anytime in the next 10 years, because the coalition will not come back together and spend the millions of dollars that they put into this to try to get it passed, because they will have spent everything they can come up with. So therefore, I'm in support of Prop 110 as we move forward. Other comments by council? Since this was a roll call vote on this previous, and this is staying under that same resolution, I'm going to ask that we do a roll call vote on this as well. Ms. Parker.
Sykes.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott.
No.
Pinter.
Yes.
Motion passes on a 4-1 vote. Next item is Amendment 73. And Ms. Byrd.
Yes, I move that we, that the city adopt a support position for Amendment 73.
Ms. Sykes.
Second.
Comments by council? Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So after looking at this one and listening to both actually some concerns from our staff about what this will do to assessments of property, as well as our business community and a lot of different sources, I just don't like the way that this is funded. I think that you'll see this whole council supports education and the fact that we supported all the other education ballots that are affecting the city of Westminster, so I just don't think that this is built in a way that I'm comfortable with in the way that they gather the funds, so I'll be voting no against it and opposing this measure.
Ms. Byrd.
Well, I'm excited about Amendment 73. For a long time, especially since the Great Recession, our state has been in a position where we have never been able to restore funding to our public schools at all, or even in an equitable manner, to be able to provide our kids with a quality public education as we all, most all of us say we would like to do. So with Amendment 73, this is an opportunity for us to increase thoughtful equitable investment in all of our public schools across the state of Colorado. This will enable so many more of our schools, districts, to be able to pay teachers a good wage again, so that our state and our school districts are able to attract and retain the very best teacher talent, and also enable school districts to fund valuable paraeducators who can provide important supports to kids with varying needs and abilities within our classrooms, also enable more of our school districts to be able to purchase relevant curriculum and expand career and vocational and technical education programming for our kids, making again education more relevant so that people have more pathways to success once they finish high school. making again, education more relevant so that people have more pathways to success once they finish high school. So I'm very excited that our city is looking at, um, supporting this. I think that the benefit that comes back to our communities, um, will, will, will come back tenfold to us in terms of us having a skilled, educated workforce and strong neighborhood schools in every one of our neighborhoods.
Other comments by council? I don't disagree with any of the comments made by my fellow council members and, uh, Ms. Byrd and I particularly have been working on a lot of issues dealing with education, career, technical education, especially getting people who are not the four-year college-bound students educated. In fact, we are hosting an education forum in less than two weeks, uh, that we pulled together. Secondary education, we pulled businesses together, we pulled all three schools together to figure out what is the way that we can work on these issues. However, very much like Mr. Demott said, I have issues with how this has an effect on the city. The fact that a, uh, salary range or income range was picked, uh, it picks at a hundred and fifty thousand is the issue that part of I have. But still, we are not fully understanding that the impact this will have on our city income, on our tax base and what it may or may not do to businesses. We're just not sure. But these kind of things at times have unintended consequences. We don't know what they will be. There's not a bigger supporter for education than I am sitting on this council and we've done everything we can to continue to help that. But in the particular case of Amendment 73, I'm not comfortable with how it's set up. And I will also be voting no on this item. Any other comments from council at this point?
Just real brief, uh, just very briefly and thank you. I, I, I will say that I do know that the, both the mayor and councillor Demott are, are big fans of supporting education. So I don't want this to seem like a, a, an attack on either of them. Uh, and I also agree with the mayor's comment that, um, oftentimes constitutional amendments have unintended consequences, which is what I think has happened here in Colorado with Gallagher and Tabor creating a news that, um, really prevents our schools to be funded appropriately and permanently, um, in the manner they do. And so to me, this is a way to correct for Gallagher, um, and to create a long-term, sustainable, um, funding source for our, our schools. And I don't know what is better to invest in than our children. So I will be voting yes.
Other comments? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this will be a roll call vote as well.
Atchison.
No.
Byrd.
Yes.
De- Demott?
No.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Have a three-two vote. Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to item 10H. Ms. Sykes?
I move to determine based on the recommendation of the city manager that the public interest would be best served by ratifying the payment of seventy-five thousand, six hundred, ten dollars to J.R. Philanic, Philanic Construction Company for Emergency Wastewater Collection Repair and approve the total authorized expenditure of seventy-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Item 10H by council. Ms. Sykes? No, okay. All right, this one is with your button, so if you would please. Motion carries on a five oh vote. All right. Barbara? Double check me. I think we got all of ten. We got all of eleven. I think that took care of the council items. Am I correct? Okay. All right, moving on. For tonight, that takes care of all the business in front of the city council. The next item that we will be moving to and, uh, adjourning of city council, we will reconvene now as the Westminster Economic Development Authority. As soon as I can get over there. Roll call will stay as previously done. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the July ninth. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approve the minutes of July ninth, 2018 meeting as presented.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Byrd, thank you. I have a motion in the second for the adoption of the minutes of the July ninth meeting. All in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried. Next item is open a public hearing on, okay. What do we got on this and Mr. Tripp?
Um, is this a, a Resolution 189?
No, that's the next item too. I've got a whole
The, the public hearing is on that? Do you want me to do the, should I do the motion first?
No, I'm just open up, so we can get it from staff first. So at this point, I'll open up the public hearing and see if we have a report from staff on this item. There is none?
Nothing other than what's been
Okay. So in order to adopt this, uh, before we go into a vote on the motion, I will open it up to the, uh, public if anyone has any comments in regards to what is being proposed in Resolution number 189, which will be coming up in the next item. If there are no comments, then I will close the public hearing and now I will open it up for a, uh, move on the resolution. Ms. Pinter, you're up.
Yes, sir. Um, move to adopt Resolution number 189, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the 2018 Westminster Economic Development Authority budget.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any comments by the members of the authority? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries on a five oh. Moving on to item B1, this is a public hearing on, uh, adoption of Resolution number 190, adopting the 2019-2020 proposed budget of the Westminster Development Authority. Is there anyone in the audience who has, would like to make any public comments in regards to the adoption of Resolution 190? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, move to the, uh, count, the authority. And Ms. Sykes?
Um, I move to adopt Resolution number 190, adopting the 2019-2020 proposed budget for the Westminster Economic Development Authority as presented, including the appropriation of funds as set forth.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, Ms. Byrd?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second for the adoption of Resolution number 190. Is there any comments from the authority? This will also be a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you will.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes. And this motion also carries on a five oh vote. Next item on the agenda is the move to authorize the executive director to amend, to execute an amended restated development agreement with the aspire Westminster Apartments LLC. Ms. Byrd?
I move to authorize the executive director to execute an amended and restated development agreement with the aspire Westminster Apartments LLC, an affiliate of Sherman Associates, Inc., and the Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as presented to the board for the development of Lot 2 of Block B3 in downtown Westminster.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion by any members of the authority? As noted previously, I had voted against this item under the city council activities. I will also be voting against this item on this item. Any other comments from the authority? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, this is a vote with your button. Let's see if I can get it there. And the motion passes on a three-two vote. Next item up is the adoption of Resolution 191. Ms. Sykes?
I move to adopt Resolution 191, authorizing the executive director to execute an amended and restated purchase and sale agreement with aspire Westminster Apartments LLC, an affiliate of Sherman Associates, Inc., in substantially the same form as presented to the board for the development of Lot 2 of Block 3 of the downtown Westminster.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion by the members of the authority? Ms. Sykes?
Um, yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Just clarification, the motion referenced Lot 3 of downtown Westminster and I believe the agreements were drafted to, uh, address Lot B3, not just Lot 3. So if, uh, the motion might be amended slightly to the referenced lot.
You know, I think I misread it. It does say Lot 2 of Block B3. I apologize if I ran those together.
Okay, can we, you know, sustain that we've corrected that, Mr. Frankel? Okay.
Yes.
And the second, are you also in agreement with the direction? Okay.
My apologies.
That's all right. Anyway, we're moving to any other discussion and did anyone else have their lights on? If not, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Demott?
No.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
No.
Byrd?
Yes.
And somebody hit their light, please. I'm missing a, a yes vote.
Oh, that's me. My apologies.
Not a problem. So the motion carries on a three-two vote. Next item is item 10E, adoption of Resolution number 192. Ms. Pinter?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution number 192, authorizing the executive director to execute a finance agreement with the city of Westminster, comma, aspire Westminster Apartments LLC, as an affiliate of Sherman Associates, Inc., and aspire Westminster Borrower LLC, an affiliate of Sherman Associates, Inc., in substantially the same form as presented to the board for the development of Lot 2 of, of Block B3 in downtown Westminster.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion by members of the authority? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
No.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
No.
Okay, motion carries on a three-two vote. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business of the Westminster Economic Development Authority for this evening. The next item up is the GID Board of Directors. And at this point, I would ask for the board to consider a single motion for the adoption of all of the meeting minutes of the prior meeting as defined in the staff agenda memorandum. And this will be only for the preceding minutes of those meetings. Ms. Pinter?
Yes, I, uh, make a motion, uh, for the adoption of the minutes, um, for the previous meetings for the 136th Avenue General Improvement District, the 144th Avenue, the Amherst General Improvement District, the Mandalay Town Hall Center, Orchard Park Place North, Park 1200, Sheridan Crossing, and also the minutes from Westminster Station.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion in the second for items contained under the agenda as marked 2A through 2H as an adoption of one single motion. Is there any discussion by members of the authority? Seeing none, would you please vote with your button?
Is it voice?
No. It's voice. I just put it in, okay.
Aye.
We got it carried either way. It's five oh. All right, moving on, this is a hold a public hearing on the 2019 budgets for the following city of Westminster General Improvement Districts, 136th Avenue, 144th Avenue, Amherst, Mandalay Towers, Mandalay Town Center, Orchard Park Place North, Park 1200, Sheridan Crossing, and Westminster Station. At this time, I will open the hearing up to anyone in the audience who has any comments that they would like to make in regards to these GID districts. And the floor is open. Okay, seeing no comment, then we will close the public hearing and I will move on to the next item on the agenda is the adoption of Resolution number 23. Ms. Pinter?
Aha, yes, I move to adopt Resolution number 23 that sets the mill levy for the next tax year for the collection, uh, in 2019 at sixteen mills for the city of Westminster, 136th Avenue, General Improvement District, formally adopt, adopts the 2019 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Ms. Byrd, do you have any comments? Okay. Are there any comments by members of the authority? Seeing none, this is one of a several roll call votes. Ms. Parker?
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
A sec.
Yes.
Couple more lights, guys.
No, I'm sorry, it's me.
Okay, there we go. All right, motion carries on a five oh vote. Next item up is Resolution number 17. Ms. Sykes?
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution number 17 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2018 for collection in 2019 at twenty mills for the city of Westminster, 144th Avenue, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2019 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any other discussion by any member of the authority? Seeing none, again, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes. And the motion carries on a five oh vote. Next item up, adoption of Resolution number 38. Ms. Byrd?
I move to adopt Resolution number 38 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2018 for collection in 2019 at five mills for the city of Westminster, Amherst General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2019 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Ms. Pinter? Here a second?
Second, yes.
Thought you were. Ms. Pinter, thank you very much. All right, can, uh, members of the authority have a motion in the second for the adoption of Resolution number 38? Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, we're back to you.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
One more person. It could be mine. Oh, anyway, we got it. All right. Motion is carried on a five oh vote. Next item is adoption of Resolution number 22. Ms. Pinter?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution number 22 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2018 for collection in 2019 at thirty-five mills for the city of Westminster, Mandalay Town Center, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2019 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any questions or comments from any member of the authority? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
All right, motion carries on a five oh vote. Next item is Resolution number 11. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution 11 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2018 for collection in 2019 at thirteen mills for Westminster Orchard Park Place North General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2019 budget for district, for the district at the presented and appropriate, the funds as budgeted.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion by any member of the authority? Ms. Parker, we're back to you for a roll call vote, please.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Motion is carried on a five oh vote. Next item up is adoption of Resolution number 5. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution number 5 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2018 for collection in the 2019 at ten mills for the city of Westminster, Park 1200, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2019 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion in seconds. Any discussion or questions by any member of the authority? Ms. Sykes, do you have something?
No, sorry.
Okay. All right. Ms. Parker, we're back to you one more time.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Motion carries on a five oh vote. Next item up is adoption of Resolution number 35. Ms. Sykes?
Um, thank you. I move to adopt Resolution number 35 that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2018 for collection in 2019 at twelve mills for the city of Westminster, Sheridan Crossing, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2019 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion by any member of the authority? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote.
Demott?
Yes.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes? Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Motion is carried on a five-o vote. Before everybody gets excited.
There's one more.
I'm sorry, there, there appears to be your last motion dropped off your spreadsheet. Apologies.
I got it though. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I move to adopt Resolution number one that sets the mill levy for the tax year 2018 for collection in 2019 at thirty-five mills for the city of Westminster, Westminster Station, General Improvement District, formally adopts the 2019 budget for the district as presented and appropriates the funds as budgeted.
Mr. Demont?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for Resolution number one, am I correct? Okay, all right. Any comments or questions by any member of the authority? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, we're back to you again.
Pinter?
Yes.
Sykes?
Yes.
Atchison?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demont?
Yep.
Motion passes on a five-o vote. Ms. Parker, are we done?
Any more surprises?
No more surprises? Ms. Opie, is there anything that you can see that we're missing that we had on these four sheets that we've gone through tonight? I think we're done. I think we are adjourned for the evening, ladies and gentlemen.
So I guess the trick is that we extend two hours before we start and then we finish?
On time.
No one wanted to stay that long. We are highly motivated. No, that was recorded. We can go back and listen.
All right, boys and girls, that's it for tonight.